So I'll go ahead and start the recording, but we still have about six minutes, it looks to me, Bill.
That's what I got.
Jim, did you just get my email that I sent you about Wednesday?
Ah, I'll pull it up real quick. Or I I didn't get with you after the, did it work, Gail? Was there a time that Wednesday worked for you?
Ah, it, I just have, I have that appointment to take my car at four P M. But.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll talk to you. We'll, we'll find. I just figured Zoom would work for these last two.
Yeah, Zoom would be fine. I just have to make sure that I'm out of here by three thirty.
Okay.
And I can make anything work, Jim, pretty much.
Yep, we're, it's a couple more interviews that we have to do for that accounts payable position on Gail this week. And then I saw, yeah, I saw next, next week for the H H R committee with the M M L. I wanted to get your guys' best time before I contacted them. They told me the week of the ninth would work. They'd be in a position for an update, so.
I'll, I'll run down and get my calendar minute. I'll be right back.
Okay.
You're gonna get some rounds in later this week, Bill? It looks like it's gonna get close to seventy a couple of times.
I was just telling Jim they got about a hundred and twenty tee times booked for Wednesday already.
Wow.
I, I have the very first one with the guy that books the first tee time every day. And it, it looks like there'll be no frost, so we'll get an early tee time.
Yeah, the week starting on the ninth, right?
Three-minute warning to everyone.
Yeah.
You said Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, right?
Yes.
Um, either Tuesday or Wednesday. It doesn't matter.
Okay.
And Jim, you're gonna put the flag up again?
Uh, that I'll do. Oh, that's not the flag.
Not yet.
That's the flag.
There's the flag.
Look at how cool and calm John is there on the night of the, uh, the election. Just not in, not a nerve showing.
Being, being unopposed has its advantages.
Just like, just like everyone else on this.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, I've got less than two minutes, died around two. Did Colin join us?
Uh, not, not yet. Oh.
Did Mr. Frisbee join us?
Not yet.
Okay.
So it still looks like two minutes, hopefully. We have some, someone calling in, so I will let everyone know, uh, the, Parks and Rec had an interruption in it, so if that happens tonight, it'll be the same thing. We'll disconnect and then reconnect within a couple of minutes, so. Uh, let me see. The three, five, zero, one, seven, uh, number, can, can I ask who the three, five, zero number is?
John Steers, fifty-seven eighty-six U V Avenue.
Okay, thanks, John.
Jim, if you do get interrupted, do we need to dial back in, or will you find a way of putting us all back on?
No, you'll need to dial back in. Just hit the link again. John, and also, yeah, because I can, I can send the links, uh, to you as well, John. Colin's coming in now. I just, we also have an iPhone that joined, and I'm just looking to make sure if we have.
That's me.
All right, that's Randy Skipper, so, um.
A minute, I got just under a minute to go.
Yeah, I, I, Colin Bailey, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I have seven P M.
Yeah, just one, one quick second. We're trying to, Tim, Tim is connecting through, uh.
When Tim gets on, I'll call the meeting to order then.
Okay. To.
I'm here.
All right, Tim Frisbee is, is, is on the, the call, Bill.
Okay, at seven, seven o'clock on October the nineteenth, and we're calling the village council meeting to order for this month, second meeting. Uh, if everyone will join me, we'll do a pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America. And to the public.
For which it stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Uh, with that, we'll take a moment of silence, and then I'll have Mr. Mallory give our rule.
Okay, trustee Keller.
Here.
Trustee Holmes.
Here.
Trustee Reaster.
Here.
Trustee Merrill.
Here.
Trustee Bailey.
Here.
President Pro-Town Frisbee.
Here.
President Adams.
Here. We all have an agenda in front of us for this evening's meeting.
Uh, point of order, village president, just to make sure, we are on the November second meeting, correct? Not the, uh, October nineteenth.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. That's wrong. Thank you for catching that, because I read it that way, didn't I?
Oh, I was having deja vu, because I, I know I was on a football field for that meeting. That's why I was curious, so.
I didn't even realize it wasn't the, the November second meeting there. Thank you. Uh, with that, the approval of the agenda, uh, we don't have any scheduled appearances, but John Gessler is on this phone call, in case there's any questions by council members about what's happening in the county. We appreciate having John present for this conference call. Is there anyone else, uh, is a scheduled appearance? I know of none.
Bill, can I make one quick comment?
Please, John.
I would have had something to say had I known that Julie was gonna have the beautiful dishes in the background. That, that, that's, that's really something, Julie.
Thanks.
Thank you for brightening my evening.
I'm, I'm just sharing it with you. Okay.
They are beautiful. Thanks.
Uh, point of order, Mr. Village President, did we approve, did we approve the agenda officially?
Yeah, thank you. We got carried away with getting the wrong date.
Sorry about that.
We have an agenda in front of us. Is there any additions or corrections?
That's the correction of the date.
Just the date, thank you. With that, ask for a roll call on the approval of the agenda.
There, there is one addition, I believe, uh, you requested, Mr. Adams. It was, uh, a discussion on, or an update on Christmas in the village, so.
Okay, would that eleven D work for that?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, so Alex Lee will lead us in the discussion on Christmas in the vi- village under eleven D. With that, I'll ask for the roll call.
Uh, we'll need a, I don't know if we had the motion or the support on the agenda.
Is there a motion for approval?
Moved, Reaster.
Trustee Reaster.
Bailey, support.
Moved and supported. Any further comments? Hearing none, we'll do roll call.
Trustee Bailey.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
President Pro-Town Frisbee.
Yes.
President Adams.
Yes. Agenda approved. Now we have, uh, scheduled occurrences. We did hear that John Gessler would like to say a couple of words.
I, I think we miscommunicated, Bill. I shot my wide last month, uh, about the, about the K, K, uh, the cats, uh, and M dot, uh, three big projects. I'm, I'm empty right now.
And, and you already talked about Julie's dishes.
Yeah, and that was a highlight of the evening, I'll tell you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. And it's citizens' time for agenda items only. We have three minutes. Is there any citizen that would like to address the council on an agenda item?
Okay, I'll, uh, go around. We have some, so I'll, uh, go, uh, Denny, Jenny Holmes, John Steers, Ryan Wagner, and then Jackie Coney. So first, Denny Olson, are you on the call, call? Do you have something on the agenda items? All right, um, Jenny Holmes.
Nope.
No, all right, uh, Mr. Steers. Uh, Mr. Steers, if I'm coming through, I'm trying to get you unmuted. All right, I can come back to Mr., Mr. Steers on that, it seems, uh, Mr. Wagner?
Uh, nothing for me. Thank you, Jim.
Okay, uh, Ms. Coney?
No, thank you.
All right, I'll try again with, uh, Mr., Mr. Uh, Steers. All right, and then we just had a new person join, uh, who's under R G T M one. If you had comments for, um, an agenda item.
I have no comments.
Okay. And, um, again, I have, uh, no comments on, uh, Mr. Adams.
Okay. Uh, the next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda in minutes of our meeting, October nineteenth. That it also includes, uh, four scheduled events for twenty twenty-one. Chili cook-off, a wedding, a graduation party, and another wedding. I entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Frisbee, he'll make a motion. Will you approve the consent agenda?
Okay, is there support?
Holmes, I support.
Okay, any further discussion by council on the consent agenda? Any questions? Hearing none?
Hearing none, uh, the roll call vote, trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Bailey.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
President Pro-Town Frisbee.
Yes.
President Adams.
Yeah. Yes. Uh, item ten on our agenda is, uh, for village council action is the electronic meeting policy, which was the last item in our packet. Mr. Mallory, would you lead us in any discussion on that first?
Sure, this is a formality as it relates to, uh, the Senate Bill eleven oh eight that was, uh, signed by, by the governor into legislation, and we, uh, had this reviewed by village attorney Andrew Horn. Uh, part of the legislation is that we need a, uh, electronic meeting policy, and this would meet those expectations. I'd be happy to answer any questions on that.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion for approval in a second, and then we'll do any questions. Is there somebody that would move for approval of saying this read the document?
Trustee Keller moved to submitted.
Okay, is there support?
Merrill, support.
Okay, been moved and supported. Are there any further questions or comments regarding this document by council? Hearing none, we're ready for roll call, Jim.
Okay, roll call will be trustee Bailey.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
President Pro-Town Frisbee.
Yes.
President Adams.
Yes. Hey, Jim, would you lead us in our village manager's report for the.
Yeah, uh, the update on the Twenty Second Street project, uh, they, they have worked the last couple Saturdays, and we, we are looking at good weather now, so they're, they're between a hundred and seventy-five foot and two hundred foot a day. Uh, they are north of the houses on Twenty Second Street on the east side of the road, um, put in their third manhole, uh, section. So we would anticipate by week's end, they'll be making a ninety-degree turn into the field. And at that point, uh, the road reconstruction will begin as well. Uh, as we sit now, barring weather and anything unforeseen, uh, we believe, uh, the week of November sixteenth, uh, will be, uh, putting the road, uh, back with, uh, asphalt. And I, uh, was out there today and kind of gave a thumbs up to the job foreman. He runs one of the excavators, but I know Alex gets a update, um, Alex, and not to put you on the spot, but, uh, if, um, the prime Newhoff representative called and there was any additional information other than what I provided, uh, be happy to add to it.
The only additional piece was, uh, Zach indicated they are north of Lily, something Lily. Uh, I, I forget, but they're north of that, uh, yeah, last street.
That's the last street, uh, that comes out of the Trillium neighborhood to the north, so. Um, but yeah, see, our, our, uh, progressing, uh, progressing well now, and be happy to answer any questions from the council.
I'm wondering from Ryan how, how it's going for the people who are living in that area.
Uh, well, Gail, so far going pretty well from, uh, what we can hear. I mean, there's a lot of frustration upfront about it, of course, but, uh, everyone's gotten used to it so far, and they're just, uh, gonna be cheering my post on the Facebook later when I tell them, expecting the sixteenth of November, uh, that week, so. They'll be glad to hear it.
Okay, but there, everything seems to be, they're able to get to their places and so forth, what's.
Yeah.
But, thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Okay, um, if there's no other questions, uh, we did, uh, as, as we had planned on in August, uh, we did collect, uh, samples, twenty-eight or twenty-nine samples throughout our, our water distribution system last Monday and Tuesday. Those were dropped off to the laboratory, uh, last Tuesday, uh, late afternoon, and we're anticipating results, uh, before week's end. Um, one variable that we put in this data set was over the weekend, prior to taking the sampling, we had D P W do a pretty aggressive, uh, flushing of the hydrants, just to see, uh, any type of impact on that. Uh, we also, uh, will be following up, uh, our well number five, which is going through a well cleaning process. After that's complete, which is on schedule to be this week, we'll take an additional sample from, from that site, so we have that data set as well. And, uh, we'll continue working on the, on this issue and, and seeking out, uh, long-term input, uh, both from, uh, the state water, uh, oversight, as well as, uh, our local engineers from Prime Newhoff. But, but we are progressing, as we stated in August, with additional collection of samples.
Okay. Any questions by council?
Uh, Mr. Mallory, it's, uh, it's Rick. I'm just curious, how many families, um, are still getting water from the bottled water from the village?
Uh, the last I checked, uh, and Scott, uh, Chief Sanderson might be able to correct me on this, but I think it's between twelve and fourteen, uh, that we're, we're taking, uh, bottled watered out to on a weekly basis.
Has that been a fairly consistent number?
Yeah, there's been, uh, a, a couple bursts. One set of twins was born in the, in the village, happy to report, so, so, uh, and, and, uh, when people have called, we've, we've gone ahead and delivered water, and we still have the, have the supply, the, the advisory, uh, again, is for twelve months and, and under.
Okay. I think we're ready to move to the next item.
Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and, and turn it over to Chief Sanderson, a big investment that the village council did approve, uh, within the budget processes, body cameras for the police department and updated, uh, cameras in the server systems, uh, that, that's progressing well, but I, uh, will turn it over to the Chief Sanderson, uh, to take question from the council and inform them of the status.
Oh, everybody, thanks, uh, thanks, Jim. Just wanted to give everybody an update on the, uh, body cameras and the in-car uh, police cameras that, um, I purchased back, um, or that we got approval for back in July. Um, we've actually purchased four sets, um, one for each cruiser. Um, there's going to be a new, uh, video recorder or a mobile video recorder within each cruiser, and then four, uh, body cameras assigned to each cruiser. At this point, these are, uh, these were purchased through WatchGuard. Uh, equipment was ordered, excuse me, equipment was ordered. Uh, there was one delay with computer system for data storage. Uh, we're gonna have, uh, what they call an on-premise, uh, data storage, um, at our location at Vicksburg, at the P D. Um, so this all kind of started on Sept- September seventh, when I received, uh, really the last piece of equipment, which, Jim, was that computer system. Um, and again, the new equipment is gonna be, uh, video recorders for each police vehicle, worn, uh, body cameras, um, for each officer that's working, along with the computer service server for data storage, and then redaction software, which is, uh, which by law we need. Um, I scheduled, uh, a- after we got the equipment, I had to schedule dates with WatchGuard. Um, they were gonna send out a technician. This is what they do along with this, uh, this whole system purchase to assist with installing software, um, uh, trial and error, if you will, testing the system, making sure it's working appropriately, and, uh, along with the cru- the cruisers and everything, so it's talking to, uh, to each one. Um, sorry, my computer made some noises or anything. Um, so then, uh, those dates, uh, that I was going to get, uh, uh, a technician down here was gonna be, uh, today, actually. The technician made it today. Um, he has started, uh, uh, if you will, uh, putting in the software and the systems. In the process of that, I had to juggle getting the cru- the cruisers out to our company to get them outfitted, uh, so we had to take out the new, or the old body, uh, not body cameras, but the old, uh, video systems. We had to put in, uh, uh, the new video systems. I could only do a couple, because I don't want my officers going without video systems on the street. So I've tried to, to, to line that up along with, uh, um, our technician coming in today. One car went in this morning. The last car will go in tomorrow. Uh, the technician is here for the next, uh, couple of days to work, uh, through any issues that we might have. Um, once, uh, once we know that everything is working appropriately, um, we'll have audio and video capabilities with the cruiser. We'll have um, actually audio and video capabilities now on calls when these officers respond out of their cars versus before we had a, an outdated system that, uh, quite frankly, was, uh, was failing, um, throughout much of, uh, its use here the last couple of years. So it's, it's, uh, it's a huge, it's a huge upgrade for these, uh, for, for my officers. Um, and again, once we get the system, uh, uh, set up, tested, um, we'll do the training for the officers. I have, uh, policies that will go into place. I'll go through that with my officers prior to, uh, them going out on the street. And I'm hoping that everybody is trained, everything's up and running, and I'm shooting, uh, to be done with it by November fifteenth and have this project completed. And I, I, I guess, just in closing, what I'd like to tell you is I, I, I really, since I've taken over the, the the police chief here in Vicksburg, I really appreciate that everybody was behind me with this project. I think this is a huge upgrade for these officers. It's a huge upgrade for the, for the community. Uh, once we get them up and running, I'll, I'll, I'll demo them to, to the council if they'd like, and just let them see how much better it's gonna be here in the village. Thank you.
Okay, any questions by the council?
Uh, trustee Holmes, um, Chief Sanderson, just one question. Are the, um, the body cams or the, uh, the, in the car as well, are they, are the officers able to turn them off, or are those on, um, active, or are they active the entire time?
The, the cameras just in the cars?
Or, or the, but, let's, let's address the body camera first, I guess, the body.
Yes, body cameras are, can be muted. They can be shut off. They're not gonna be a, a twelve-hour recording system. Um, I don't, uh, we don't want officers being recorded when they're inside the stations or anything like that, so they have the ability to be, to be, uh, shut down. There is a loop that I'm told that they, that they, they run on. Um, however, they do have that capability.
Scott, can I, uh, clarify on that? I believe the policy that will be put in place, though, anytime they have, the policy would require it to be on for any contact with our public. Would it?
That's correct. That's correct. It, it would have to be on any, anytime they have any contact with anyone, uh, in the public. Anytime that they think that the, the, the video and the audio is beneficial, um, it might not be actually a reason. Well, it could be just a, a citizen contact where they feel that they need to turn that on.
Yeah. I, I appreciate that, Mr. Mallory, because I think that's, I think it's important that, that somehow be shared within the community. I, 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 I think it's great that we're doing this. I think it's essential, especially in the world we live in today. Um, it's just, um, unfortunately, there's, there's people that may have a negative perception of this. Um, and I think it's, you know, we all know it's, it's to su- support not only the officers' or safety and the safety of those that they're working with in the community, but I think it's also helpful done, for people to understand. Um, you know, the, the, the sense of privacy that we're also using, you know, with this and the officers as well, so it's, but thank you, though, for the clarification on that.
Any, any other questions? If not, I, then I'd personally like to thank Chief Sanderson for, uh, getting this project to this point. Very good.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, I'd, uh, I'd, I'd echo Bill's self-sediments. It's, uh, another example of being able to give a project to, to a department director and just having them, uh, carry the ball across the goal line, so it, it certainly is, uh, nice and appreciated, so thanks, Scott, from myself as well. Now, uh, we'll turn it over to Mr. Lee for an update, um, on Christmas in the village.
Thank you, Jim. Very briefly, uh, Christmas in the village is move along, uh, very quickly. Uh, we're focused on the Christmas card lane in the historic village at this point. Uh, we have canvassed the downtown merchants and most service organizations for donations and participation. And businesses seem to be happy with the options of painting their own card or having one made. Um, we are backtracking now to try and lock down commitments and decisions over the next ten days, so we have production and placement time. We've secured an initial supply of plywood, uh, gathered up all the lighting we can find, and we're working with D P W and the Historic Society on logistics, which will include, uh, Miss Dig markings, um, along the path in the historic village. Uh, discussing sightlines. In other words, if they're going to decorate a building, a gazebo, have something going on in there, we don't want cards disrupting those sightlines. Um, Mr. Adams is out and about. He's working his donation magic, and I'm sure you can expect to hear from him soon, if you haven't already.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jim.
And, and, uh, Alex, I'd, I'd like to thank you for the efforts of this project, coming up with it and, and cheering it. I have contacted Alex, uh, over half of our village council, uh, talking about having a contribution from the village council as a whole. Uh, so we can become a, a thousand-dollar sponsor in this event, and, uh, with a thousand. And with a thousand dollar sponsorship, we would have a Christmas card placed in the Christmas card. Do we call it alley, or what do we call the area where we're gonna post them?
Uh, Christmas Card Lane is what we're calling it.
Yeah, so if you haven't been contacted by me, expect a phone call in the next probably twenty four hours, and we'll try to get our card designed and our contributions in. What I'm gonna be asking after the, if I get pledges from the council, is that they drop off a check at the village hall, and it should be, the memo should be, it's for Christmas Card Lane, and as a group, we'll try to be one of the major sponsors of this event.
You would write the check to the village of Vicksburg, and then in the memo say for Christmas Card Lane?
That would be the way we'd want it. Alex, any correction on that?
Yes, Christmas Card Lane or Christmas in the Village, either of those is appropriate.
Okay.
Let's, if we, Michelle, is that good on?
Still muted.
Yep.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Christmas in the Village would be the best.
What?
In the memo. In the memo, yes, so the check made out to the village of Vicksburg, and in the men memo line, put Christmas in the Village.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, 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 and.
President Adams?
Yes, sir.
There's one question. The profits for this, what, can you share where they go? Is it? I'm just.
Want to cover that, where the monies are gonna go?
Yes, the monies, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Uh, the monies will all go to Christmas in the Village through the DDA. Some of the things we're looking at is additional lights for downtown decorating, the seating of the Christmas Card Lane. We still are going to do some judging of our downtown decorations, our Christmas Card Lane, and if we get the parks decorated, that would be another category, so there would be some prize money involved there, but all the proceeds would go to Christmas in the Village. Anything that is left over would stay in the DDA account as money for next year's project.
Yeah. Thank you for that explanation, and I I would say, Alex, we will be buying a number, or probably already have, a number of sheets of four by eight plywood, because some of the businesses are gonna paint their own activity scenes or their own, create their own Christmas card.
That is correct.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you for that update, Alex, and thank you for the initiative.
Thank you, Alex.
Yeah, I'm very, very excited about it, I I love the idea of the Christmas Card Lane, I think it's gonna be great.
Yeah. I think that takes us to citizens comment time on non agenda items. I know we have a number of citizens on, but Jim, I'll let you look for the ones to be raised or calling them.
Yeah, I saw John Gisler put his hand up, so just a second here, John, let's get organized under this agenda item. I'm gonna, as I'm looking at the screen, I'll go from John Gisler to John Steers and her, and from there, Jackie and Jenny, Danny and Ryan, so we'll start Mr. Gisler for three minutes.
Uh, thank you very much. I had not intended to say anything about this, but Scott reminded me of it, I had a chance three weeks ago to spend Saturday from eight AM to four PM going through what the sheriff calls the response to resistance training, and it's, you know, a very squeezed in, a softer version of what deputies go through in terms of how you handle confrontations with citizens, and it was absolutely the best eight hours I've spent in a long time, it was wonderful. And I will also follow up, I think it's amazing that that Vicksburg is already putting body cams out there, the county sheriff's deputies will have body cams, I think they were supposed to have them installed, trained and everything else over the last weekend, but you guys are right on top of it. And in going through that response to resistance training, a lot of it, three hours or so, was spent reviewing video from body cams and comparing what you could see when you could back the body cam up, run it in slow motion, annotate it to circle things that you didn't see in the the version that was put out in the media, and it was, it was very eye opening. We had one where a chap was running away from an officer, and the officer seemed to shoot him seven times in the back after they'd gone about five blocks. Well, when you back the thing up, slowed it down, and watched what was really happening, the guy had a gun in his waistband, and he was getting ready to turn around and shoot the officer. So, you know, that went from one end of the spectrum to the other, just by being able to look at it in that, with that degree of sensitivity. So I'm I'm a big proponent of body cams, and I'm a big proponent of this kind of training for especially elected officials, because you always get on the end of the 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 straw where somebody's got, you know, blood in their eye, and they think you're, you know, protecting rogue cops and that sort of thing, and this this will let you think, that's probably not the case. Anyway, that's all I wanted to say, is I took that training and it was dynamite.
Okay.
All right, super. Well, Mr. Steers. I'm not sure, Mr. Steers, if we have asked him on mute a couple times, we'll go back round, Jackie.
Nothing for me, thanks.
Thanks, Jackie. Jenny Holmes.
Nothing for me.
Thank you. Danny. Danny knows how to hit me with the hand single if he has it, Ryan Wagner.
All set, thank you, Jim.
All set, and I'm not RGTM, I don't know if that was Rob or?
Uh, Jim, it's Ron Markin, and I don't have any comments, thank you.
Thank you, Ron, and I'll try again for Mr. Steers. He's connected by phone. And I don't have anything, so I think that takes us all the way around, I hope I didn't miss anyone, no one's put a hand up or singled in any of the official Zoom manners, Mr. Adams, so I think we're good.
Okay, next item on the agenda is president's time. I guess I'd just like to again say a thank you to the staff for their efforts with Christmas in the village, Scott Sanderson on getting the body cam setup, that's all good news. So it's time for trustees, and I'd like to start with, excuse me, Colin Bailey.
I'm all set, Bill.
Okay, Tim Frisbee.
I just wanted to, you know, continue on what people have said, and and John Gisler had said about the body cams, you know, kudos to the entire team that's on this call to, all the trustees, the village manager and Scott, they have the foresight. I was listening to an artist over in Detroit, listen to the big, the big voice over there, and I found out that Warren, I believe it was more Warren, they don't have body cameras yet, and I thought, a community of that size, they don't have them, and we're actively involved in already purchasing, you know, that's a good job, and to everybody on the call, thank you.
Yeah. Uh, Carl Keller.
Uh, I echo everything that that Tim just said, I think it's, it's very forward thinking on our part. I think it takes a lot of questions out of the equation, which sometimes come up. I do apologize for missing the meeting two weeks ago, I was, as I said, on a football field, and when I did try to connect, I decided driving was, being safe driving was was more important than trying to connect on a Zoom call, so.
Thank you, Carl.
If if I if I came in and dropped out, that's why, so. Um, last thing, just everybody, if you haven't already, please, please vote tomorrow, it's it's your American, your your citizens' responsibility, so.
Thank you.
Here, here.
Gail, you have any?
Yeah, I would, I just am so really excited about what the Christmas in the Village people have done, I think that they have really thought this through and have have come up with some great ideas, so I'm really excited about that. And Scott, I'm wondering, the the training that the that your men are going to go through, is it anything about what John was talking about?
No, when I'm speaking of the training, it was specifically to the use of the body cams at this point, that that's the the training he's talking about, I've heard of it, and it's something we certainly look at.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. Julie Merrill.
I was just gonna say, I'm really, really glad that those body cams are gonna be put in force, we had, we had a situation a couple Saturdays ago, and it was just, the police really kept their cool, but there was a person just really struggling, either mentally or drug wise, I don't know, but I just really wished we already had those cameras, and the the police were great, I mean, they were just super great, and can't say enough about them, but I'm just glad they're they're coming into play any second now.
Okay, well, good. Mr. Holmes.
Thank you, Mr. Adams, I would just like to thank the Parks and Rec Director for the time she spent last week in cleaning up the the village signs on the entrance of W Avenue there.
Yeah.
Beautiful, and a lot of time and effort was put into that, so I'd just like to say thank you to that, that individual.
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad you brought that up, Rick, because I didn't know that was done, so now I'll I'll look for it, thanks.
Yeah, yeah. I saw her working there, that was good to see.
Thank you, Jenny.
Yeah, thank you, Jenny.
Yeah. And it was just a bit of humor, we had Halloween in Vicksburg, which was great, and Rick Holmes has got a new neighbor, Paul Van Nuss, and Paul's and his wife, his wife gave birth to a baby on Halloween night. Been a trev- yeah, in case you get stuck down there at the distant whistle on that night, where you gotta have that answer, so.
It appears we might be up to fifteen, Mr. Holmes.
All right, well, that concludes tonight's meeting, and if I haven't contacted you, I think there's three of you, I'll be contacting you shortly to see whether you'll help contribute to Christmas in the Village and a Vicksburg Village Council Christmas card. With that, I'll call our meeting to adjournment. Everyone enjoy the evening.
Thank you.
Everybody stay well.
Yeah, to Gail.
Okay, yeah, I'm working on it.
Bill, I got a check. It's all made out, but I didn't drop it up yet.
Oh, good deal, Julie, thank you, and, yep, okay, and Carl, Rick, or Tim, are two of the guys I gotta get a hold of here shortly, so I'll give you.
I don't know about you, I don't know about you, Alex, but it sounded a lot like the proverbial checks in the mail, they're at the.
Yeah, they're all in the mail.
Don't call me, I'll call you.